I would like to call to order the Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, Brooklyn City Board of Education, regular board leading Mr. Shearhart. Will you call the role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Rafter.
Here.
Mr. Heserini, here, and Ms. Kroll.
Here, please stand for the clinch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're sorry that the Brooklyn Board of Education approved the Board of Education Agenda for September 16th, 2025, as recommended by the Treasurer and Superintendent. May I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shearhart, will you call a role, please?
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Heserini.
Yes.
And Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Rafter.
Yes.
Ms. Kroll.
Yes. In order for the Board to fulfill its obligation to complete the planned agenda in an effective and efficient fashion, a maximum of 30 minutes of public participation as it pertains to school-related topics to be permitted at each meeting. Each person wishing to address the Board will approach the podium and state his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted three minutes until a total time of 30 minutes is used. During that period, no person may speak twice until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote of the majority of the Board.
Hey, guys. Justin Fitch on 4744 Autumn Lane. First order of business, I want to quickly address publicly you guys. Can't run anybody on the audience. I've never said misappropriated funds. I never would say that, never came out my mouth. I have talked to multiple people about appropriated funds. I may say mismanaged with the general funds, with the money, and also with the $10 million into an O-70 account on June 30th. I give an explanation of why it relates to legislation and possible caps forthcoming, but I've never said misappropriate. I don't need to say that. If somebody mis-- I'm strictly talking about moving money. As if I say mismanagement, that's my take on what our general funds money was. Moving along, I want to congratulate Brooklyn Schools on the state report card today. Four stars with progress category receiving five. Five stars in progress. Wow. Why would we deviate from what is already working? Stay the course. We're-- We have the backing of the financial community-- Oops, sorry. Oh, sorry. Of course, two things I want to say about the report card I saw. 70% economically of our children disadvantaged. The reason why I bring that up is whether you use data metric points, like the Ohio Policy Matters, which is like a progressive, more left, or you use like the Hoover or Fordham Institute, which is more right-hand. Regardless of which one you point to, they all meet in the middle for the metrics and say the same thing about K through 12. The 14th to 17th student class size is optimal. You're getting the super results that we ask of our teachers. I credit all the teachers and aides. Thank you for the hard work you put in in getting that report card. But I also know, as an economically disadvantaged district, we have to keep those classes small to keep these. Let's keep the ball rolling. Guys are doing great work. Also, you have the community financial backing with all the bonds and levies. Let's not ruin that or tinker with that. What is working? We can lose that in a heartbeat with one step, the financing that makes all these great results happen. One thing I also would point out, out of 617 districts in the state of Ohio, we're the eighth most diverse. That's pretty cool. That's top 1%, 2%. So my point in all this is everything we need to be successful right is right here in the Brooklyn bubble. Thank you. I'll see everyone tomorrow, 7 o'clock, senior side.
Okay, then we will move on to the superintendent's report with Lisa.
Thank you. So I am not Dr. Claris. I am Lisa DeLeese, the Assistant Superintendent and his replacement tonight. So as we get-- I want to welcome everybody here tonight. We're happy to see all of you. Couple of things on the list that I want to mention. We want to definitely congratulate Jeriani Dominguez Calderon on being the recipient of the NFL Latino Youth Honors Award. The Cleveland Browns came out and honored her a week or two ago, and that was fantastic. We also would like to congratulate the Brooklyn Hall of Fame class of 2025. We had that induction ceremony last week with a nice turnout. We also-- Dr. Claris wanted me to mention that he will be having his annual Fall Community Coffee Chats. They are going to be on October 9th in the Board Office Lobby from 4:00 to 5:00 and 6:00 to 7:00, and on Saturday, October 18th, from 9:00 to 10:30 in the Board Office Lobby. So those will be posted. He'll see those out and about, but he just wanted me to definitely mention that. As far as our report card, we did receive a four this school year. We're super excited, the work that our staff has done and the-- all of the hard work. That is with a lot of intention, and so we're pleased with it, but our work is not done. So we still have areas that we will be working on. We'll be sharing that with the community when we dive into some of our academic year in review. We will be doing that in November. So we are pleased with that, but we are super excited to welcome all of our families, our new families, our existing families to Brooklyn and being part of our success and moving forward with that. So as we move forward, I would like to introduce Dr. Janet Kova-Sack. She is going to come up. This is our presentation for the month from students at Brooklyn School.
Thank you so much for having me. And thank you for coming. And I'm so excited that you're here to see the children. They are amazing. So at the Brooklyn School, we have some great students. We have some wonderful new families that have come in. And as a way to connect, we built a buddies and ambassador program. And this is a way for that transitional period to build friendships and to meet people and become a part of our Brooklyn School community. So we have Ms. Smith and Ms. Gallagher here with some incredible kids to tell you all about the program.
Well, first of all, we would like to thank the Board, and we'd love to thank our administrators for inviting us to come out this evening so that we can share with you our new Brooklyn School Buddies and Ambassador Program. This is something that Mrs. Gallagher and I are so passionate about. We are so excited to be doing something new. When we get new students, many of you may or may not know, we do a lot of different things to kind of get them acclimated to the building, make sure that they're feeling welcome, from calling families, taking them on tours, doing new student lunch bunches. And this year, we are just so glad to have so many more. Not only are we so glad to have so many more students, we also knew that we were going to need to enlist the help of some others because there's just too many and there's only two of us. And so in a moment, we'll be introducing you to some of our newly assigned student ambassadors. But again, one of the things that we really value is making sure that we get to know our new students. So during our lunch bunches and throughout, we're constantly checking in, asking them, what has been your experience here at Brooklyn so far? What have you liked about being here? Who's made you feel welcome? Who had-- and what have they done to make you feel welcome? And so we have one brave young lady who's representing some of our new students, and that's Ms. Galilea Mendez. Sweetheart, can you please share with everybody what it's been like for you since you've come to Brooklyn?
The lunch bunch, teachers and friends have all made me feel welcome.
Now, that's just one kid. Obviously, we've got tons more. So we were gathering information from some of those other students. And two of our other young ladies up here are going to share with you some of the other feedback that we've gotten from some of our students. So Ms. Kinza Yun, can you please share with us what some of the other new students have shared?
The people who have made me feel welcome are the teachers who call on you and my new friends. I also really like the lunch bunch, library and art.
We also have-- also have more information from some of our new students that I'd love to share.
The people who have made me feel welcome are the teachers, Ms. Smith, Dr. Kay and Ms. Gallagher.
We didn't pay them to stay. These are words without a mouse and bane. Without further ado, though, we'd really like to introduce you. Like you said, we can't do this job all on our own. We really call upon the experts. These are the guys that make the new kids feel welcome. So without further ado, we have with us Ms. Kinza Yun. And as I'm announcing them, Ms. Gallagher has this very special certificate that she's handing them, as well as they're all wearing their badges that they will wear proudly as they are doing their duties throughout the school year. So first again, Ms. Kinza Yun. Next to her is Xyla Arrendas. We also have Leah Salzman. Leonardo Jordan. Morgan Suffridge. Aiden Cologne. Landon Cox. Saideg Hasaruni. I totally messed it up again. Four years, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I always call her Ms. Hasaruni. Callie Palaza. Abby Waidoko. And Amaya Cologne. Now, these are just our third and fourth grade representatives. We have ambassadors from 3 through 7. And in our K1 and 2 classrooms, we have certain buddies. And all of these students are chosen. I'll have Mrs. Gallagher take it from here.
Okay, so what do our student ambassadors do? So we have chosen these students because they have demonstrated a welcoming and engaging students by sharing their positive tips and experiences and tools to navigate being a new hurricane. They will also be assisting with student tours, setting a welcoming tone for our visitors, being available to answer questions and provide support, be it a lunch buddy or a recess friend, be available to answer questions and provide-- oh, sorry-- assist with student and family events such as open houses and orientation, and being a positive role model and demonstrating our kids' behavior. So you might be wondering how these students were chosen. So we asked all of the teachers to submit names of students that they felt demonstrated positive kids' behavior. And at Brooklyn, we always start our morning by saying the kids' badge. And so we're going to say that now because they are experts at knowing all of the good qualities that we respect from our Hurricanes. So as a Brooklyn student--
I can be caring and safe, a team player, nice and responsible, respectful to everyone and super for our school. Go Hurricanes!
So after they were chosen by their teachers, we-- Mrs. Smith and I met with these students, and we talked with them about were they willing to accept this role of being these good role models to our new students and our school community? And all of them very enthusiastically accepted the challenge and the honor of representing our school to help others feel welcome and continue the positive climate that we set forth at Brooklyn. All right, so now we would like to give them an opportunity to share why they felt that they would be a good student ambassador. So we'll start with Leah.
I think I would be a good student ambassador because I am kind and a good listener. I will help them and make them feel like they fit in. Brooklyn is a great place because it's a no bullying zone and everybody, everyone is kind.
Thank you, Leah. And now, Abby.
I can make new students feel welcome by helping them with their work. I can also be kind and play with them on playgrounds.
Awesome, Abby. Thank you. And Amaya.
I think I would be a good student ambassador because I'm kind, caring and safe. And I like helping others. I can help students, new students, when they are confused and talk to them when they are sad. I can also show them love.
Amazing. And Callie.
I think I would be a good student ambassador because I am a good student who listens and follows directions. I also really like helping others. I can let new students know we have cool, kind kids and lots of fun activities like PBIS and field trips.
Okay, that's awesome. Thank you very much, Callie. So while this is a new program, Mrs. Smith and I are very excited to mentor these students along the way and really, really help them take on this role that they have accepted. So thank you for letting us share about our new program.
Thank you. Let me see if I can get everybody. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you all. You guys know that you don't have to-- you can sneak on out if you would like. Thank you. Thank you. So I want to just-- that was awesome to see the kids. I think it's exciting that we have over 200 new students in Brooklyn this school year. Whether they are open enrolled, we had 84 students, and then we have over 120 students that either have just moved into the district or have re-enrolled into our district. So that's super exciting. And thank you, Dr. Kay, for working with your counselors and creating an awesome ambassador.
Amazing brainstormers.
Thank you. And that's my-- that's Dr. Claris's report.
It's your report.
It's my report.
We'll move on to Mr. Shearhart and the Treasurer's report.
Okay, I wanted to start off with the five-year forecast. Again, this is going to be due October 15th in the state. So I'll start off by saying that our cash balance at the beginning of this fiscal year was at $10.7 million. Over the year, we're expecting to receive about $25 million in revenue. And the expenditures are forecasted to be about $21 million-- uh, $22 million, which will leave us with a positive cash balance for the year of $3.2 million. That in turn will be added to the reserve, which, once it's added to the reserve, will allow us to continue operationally for additional years before we have to ask the community for new money. So it's very important. The revenue, where it comes from, basically, 69% is from local taxes. That is Class 1 and Class 2, which is real estate and agriculture, which Brooklyn does not have any agriculture. And the Class 2, which is the business and commercial. So the other piece is state funding, which is 16%. That is the schools, state foundation money, which is based on the per pupil count that we-- or I'm sorry, money that we receive. It also includes the money for the gifted programs, the DPIA programs, student wellness. So all of that makes up the state funding. And then the other funds-- or I'm sorry, other revenue, a bulk of that is currently our investment revenue. So that's the interest that we make off of the investments for the general fund. Current year expenditures, we have the personnel costs, which are 78%. That is-- that's in line with what's called, considered a service industry, which is what we are. We don't make widgets and sell them. So a majority of our cost is personnel. The other piece is purchase services. One of the pieces-- I would say one of the largest pieces of that are substitute teachers that we get from the county ESC. Because they are not our employees, they are run through the purchase service piece. And then all other expenditures. So the forecast, just a little bit here. The 2025, as you can see, the revenue is actually lower than the expenditures. The main purpose that-- or I'm sorry, the main reason that the expenditures were higher was because we created the O-70 fund. So that was-- that was the transfer of the money into that. So that's why the expenditures are greater in '25. Transfers and advances are considered part of that. '26, the projection, you can see that the revenue is greater than the expenses for-- actually, for the next three years. In 2029, we start to see a deficit spend. So our expenses are larger than the revenue coming in at that point. In 2030, you can-- you can really tell that the expenditures are greater. And again, that's part of the deficit spending. One of the pieces-- and that's why I referred to the carryover amount because it's important because as we deficit spend, we are actually eating away at that reserve. So because the reserve is healthy, it saves us from having to go back to the community again for new money. So we can-- we try to keep that going as long as we can. So as long as we keep the revenues higher and the expenses contained, we will have that reserve to go out as long as we can get it to go without asking for new money. And you can see the projected cash balance in the other graph. We are going up, which is good. And then in '29, it peaks. And then in '30, you can see where it drops off. That-- at that point, that's where we start eating into the reserve funds. This is looking at-- the first graph on the left is looking at the annual change in revenue. So this is from '21-- I'm sorry, '23 through '25. The revenue went up 7.8%. Part of that was because of the reevaluation in '24. So that's why 7% it averages out. Over the next five years, from '26 to '30, the average increase is only going to be about a quarter of a percent. Now, that's based on everything staying status quo right now. If there's any changes from the state as far as state funding or anything, that's going to change. One of the things that I do like to point out is that the five-year forecast is a living, breathing thing. Basically, right now, this is as accurate as I can make it based on the information that I have. Next week, it can change. The Senate is due to come back and might vote for the overrides. That could have some effect on this. I believe they're coming back September 21st. So I have to wait and see what happens with the overrides. Let's see. On the-- the graph on the right-hand side shows the annual change in expenses. So over the last five years, or four years, you could see that the change went up 15.6%. Over the next five years for the forecast, it's actually reducing 1.6%. The-- again, based on the information that I have at this point, this is as accurate as we can pretty much be. So hopefully, there won't be a whole lot of changes going on in the future. But this current budget is a biennial budget. So in two years, that could change because there will be a new budget from the state on that. This is the days in cash that we have on hand. So as you could see, from '23 through '24, we could go anywhere from 179 days to 267 days with cash on hand. That's liquid cash, so we could pay any bills or anything. We-- if we were to stop having any money come in, that's how many days we could go. In '25, again, this reflects the transfer from the O-70 fund. So that's why it dips down to 135. Now, in '26 through '28, you can see it's increasing again based on what I know at this point. And then in 2029 is where we start the deficit spending. That's why it's dropping again down to 274. And then in 2030, you can see that it drops quite a bit, roughly about 19 days. So that's because we're going deeper into the reserve. This is the district educated enrollment. So you could see back in 2021, we had 1,100 students. And we have been slowly losing enrollment since then. From 2021 through 2025, the average was about 19 students a year. So, you know, that's something that we really had to address. So you could see in 2026, that includes the 84 open enrollment students that came in, which bumped us back up. And then in 2027 through 2030, that reduction is not based on open enrollment students. It's based on our current students with that average coming back into play as we would just naturally lose students. From 2027 through 2030, I do have that is set at 75. Those save-- the same 75 kids staying within the district. So that's-- that's why that's-- those open enrollment kids are still there. And then this is the per pupil spend. So you could see back in 2021, it was $15,000. 2022, it was 17. 2023, 17. 2021 was post-COVID. That's when ESAR funds were first received. So a lot of the expenses that would have gone to the general fund were transferred to ESAR money. So we had the same number of kids, but it was basically divided over less revenue. So that's why it drove the number of-- the dollar per student down. And again, '22 and '23, we had ESAR 2 and ESAR 3 came in. So it did increase a little bit. It wasn't as much in those two years as it was the first year. And then 2020, we just had very-- just a little bit of ESAR money left at that point. That's when it finished out. In 2023, that's where the O-fund-- oh, I'm sorry, the Fund O-70. It's another anomaly based on that because it's showing as an expense. And then in 2026-- About the 2025 anomaly? Yes, 2025, I'm sorry. And then 2026 through 2030, you can see it's a-- it's not a large jump, which it would have been. That shows that the open enrollment students are dropping the per pupil-- per pupil cost because you're taking the same cost and dividing it by more students. So that's why that's actually come down.
So we're not actually paying more or less per student. It's we have the same budget. It stays the same. But the students are what makes it variable.
Yes.
Thank you.
So you're adding more kids to the pool and it's getting divided over a larger number, which is driving the amount down. Now, the amount's still going up, but it's increasing at a decreasing rate rather than increasing at an increasing rate.
All right, that's increasing because you have a projector that we're losing X amount of students over those same years.
And that is-- that is figured in here, yes. And that's what I have for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I have my financial update.
First, are there any questions on that?
Yeah, thank you. So the expenditures, obviously, are going to go up. The revenue doesn't seem to raise either over the next few years. The triannual property taxes, we're going to get another one in 2029, correct? Or 2028?
28.
28. Obviously, we don't know what that's going to be like. Is that factored in here or no? Or can we even factor it?
I'm trying to think if I did. I believe I did. I believe I did. No, you know what? I did not, because I don't have any idea on what the basic percentage is going to be. As we, as I get closer, like next year, for next years, I will factor it in. One of the other things with the, the five-year forecast that I handed out, when you have levies, like we have a renewal levy, an emergency renewal levy on in '27, and another one in '29. So with the five-year forecast, you'll notice that the, the real estate taxes up on the top are reducing. And the reason they're reducing is because with the five-year forecast, the state assumes it will not pass. They don't, they don't want you to make the assumption that it will, and then you'll have that money. So what they do is in the five-year forecast, the levies are taken out of the top, and the revenue is added to the bottom. So when you look at the, at the bottom line, which is 15.01, that includes all the current plus the levies. So that's kind of what we go on. We like to assume that they will pass. But I, I have to keep track of both, because I got to figure out what we're going to do if they don't, and I got to be ready if they don't. And then I have to keep track to see when that deficit spending starts affecting the bottom line.
And you're pretty conservative, conservative when it comes to these numbers, so.
Yes. When, when I looked, there, there's another piece of software for the five-year forecast. It's, it's called BM... It's part of the frontline, five-year forecast software, sorry. And what, what I do is I'm conservative on the revenue, and I'm conservative on the expense. So what I tend to do is underestimate the revenue and overestimate the expense. And by going through that software, I can see every month, it's looking at what I forecast compared to what the actuals were. So, and then it runs, so I have two months of actuals for this year. The rest are based on my, my prior forecast, and it's looking at what I budgeted this year. So it's, it's kind of shooting that ahead, and it's looking 12 months down the line for the current year, and saying, okay, this is what you budgeted. This is what your forecast is at this point. This is how much it's off. So because I am conservative, everything, you know, the revenue is actually higher than what I expect, and the expenses are actually lower than what I expect. I don't like surprises. So that's, that's pretty much why. And that's, that's what's helpful about that, that, that module in that software is, I can see exactly how close I am, how far off I am on my, on my estimations.
And based on the numbers we're seeing here, we're not going to have to ask for remoney, at least for this next five years, at least, right?
Right. With, I mean, when you do the caveat, all things...
All things the way it is now.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And again, you know, and when we do this again in May, it could be totally different. You know, like I said, this is, this is kind of a living, breathing animal, and I don't want it to show up completely.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, so for the month, we, we received the, the settlement for the second half of 2024 taxes. That came in at about 6.5 million. So that will be all we are getting from the county until probably, we should get the first advance for next year in maybe January or February. So for year-to-date, the levy income has 8,840,000. That's roughly about 44% of what we, what we expect for the year. Investment income, which is actually doing better than, than I thought. I expected that to drop off, you know, with the, with the Fed lowering rates and things. But we actually received $85,698 for the month. That brings our year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date total to $167,450, which is about 19% of what I budgeted. Personnel is running about 74% with salaries and benefits. And operational, which is basically everything else. One of the other pieces for the operational is that includes the county auditor fees for the collection of the, of the real estate taxes. One thing that I'd never brought up in the past, and I did send it out, I did include it in, in my, my update over the weekend, was that there's a fee in there, it's called DTAC. And what that is, is anytime there are delinquent taxes, the county charges us 10% for those delinquent taxes. I want to say that I think in the update that I sent, the, the delinquent taxes for this, this half that we just received was about $149,000. The county charged us $14,900 for them. One of the, one of the treasurer meetings that we're talking about, and one, one district has a, a company within its boundaries, and I can't remember what company it was. They paid their real estate taxes one day late, and the school district lost, I think it was like $25,000. One day late, they got in the mill one day late. So I just want to make the board aware that, that that's also a cost that we incur, that we have a choice. That's, it's state law that the counties can charge us 10% of the delinquent taxes. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to board committee reports and comments for board members, and we'll start with Rocky Neal.
All right. Evening, everyone. I'll start with congratulations to the 2025 Brooklyn Hall of Fame. It was a nice event last Thursday. It was Thursday, wasn't it? Yeah, nice event. There's a lot of, good, good group. There's a lot of good alumni here. Some guys have tried to build that alumni. Let's go. I'm going to get that up there as well. Anyway, so congrats all of them. I missed the technology meeting. My buddy Jason will take care of that today, right, buddy?
Nope.
Since we're talking about ambassadors, just want to let you know that Polaris has their own event where they have ambassadors that help the students, that are, new students coming in there as well, too. Polaris Career Enrollment Services, and they have a timeline. They're actually starting, they hit kindergarten and first grade as far as some of the stuff that they're trying to develop. Different, different approaches as far as I have in here. Hold on a second. Discovery to the Youth Future, they're starting a little comic book, so it'll be a little better what this is, but this is what they'll be starting to, some of the kids in first, second grade may see this stuff soon. So there's a lot of good things going on there. You know, we are the smallest school there, but the biggest percentage of kids that go to Polaris. I think it's one of the most wonderful things this neighborhood could have. There's so many options to that school, and I think it's just a, one thing that's well worth the money that is spent, the tax dollars that is spent in Brooklyn City schools. That's just my general opinion. So, so, but I want to bring up one of our, apologize here. One of our former board members' husbands has been selected to be in the Polaris Hall of Fame, Steve Barcheck, Bonnie Barcheck's husband. You know, I got the letter she wrote and everything, and his credentials. He's actually in the, started an adult police academy in 2005, and he's moved up the ladder. If any of you guys know Bonnie, when she writes a letter, she writes a letter. All right. I'll, I'll tell you a quick story. When she first got on the board, we closed Rodell. She wrote this letter. I wish I would have kept a copy. It was about three pages long. But anyway, I just want to congratulate Steve Barcheck for his, for becoming the Polaris Hall of Fame. I believe the dinner is sometime in October, so I just wanted to point that out. Next thing is, there's a College Career Resource Fair, October 7th at Polaris. It's a Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:30. The Fall Advisory Dinner Meeting, where Steve will be introduced into the Hall of Fame, networking dinner, program Hall of Fame, and there's a Fall Advisory Dinner Meeting, what is this, October 14th? Do we have a meet until 14th? We might. That'd be the third Tuesday, right? The 14th Tuesday?
No, the 7th is the conference.
Oh, good. Then I get to have dinner, you guys don't. I wasn't going to this meeting anyway unless you didn't have dinner. If there was a conflict, just so I guess not. Anyway, you know me. And then the manufacturing for days, for a day was pretty interesting. What they're trying to do, of the six schools, they're trying to get 10 kids from each school. There is a place out in Valley City, Liverpool Industrial Park, where they're going to bring 10 kids from each, each district and take them up to manufacturing. I guess there's a, probably a dozen manufacturing in that area, and they're going to tour those places, have lunch and all that stuff. So I think it's very, really important. And then, we're going to have community open house. They're going to have trick or trade, Thursday, October 30th, 2025. There'll be candy giveaways, so they want everybody to tour this facility, also tour the facility on the 30th. So they're going to have all kinds of stuff going on at Polaris. That's the end of my report, so I'll come up, come up with today.
Thank you. Jason Hall, will?
Thank you. Supposed to have a rec meeting yesterday, it was canceled last minute, so I'll have an update next time we have that. Today, we had a technology committee meeting. These guys here are doing a great job. They're pushing to hit three days on tickets. They've already closed out 271 this year. School has not been live for very long.
What, calendar year or school year?
I'm assuming school year. Oh, yeah. They're animals. The Beck Center is all ready to go with some minor tweaks on the technology, their boards, you know, their internet, everything is set up. Only thing is phones, once the teachers go back to that building, their phones will come with them, and these guys will make sure that those are taken care of. I want to thank the student summer employees that we had. I heard that they were rock stars and helped these guys out a ton. So thank you to those guys. We'll be starting an instructional technology team that's going to meet three times a week, a big focus on AI, and how we can kind of start attacking that, as that's become a part of, you know, our day-to-day. But very nice job, the technology team, a lot of good things going on. I want to congratulate Diana Dominguez on her NFL Latin Youth Award Honor. I got to help out and coach her a little bit in track. She is such a great kid, totally deserves it. Super happy for her. I want to thank our young ambassadors and the parents that brought them. Just another amazing program that we provide here at Brooklyn. Just a great way to build leadership in such a young group, and I think it's phenomenal. Congrats to our Hall of Fame inductees, all super deserving, all doing totally different things to kind of get them there, but all earned it. If you think someone deserves to be part of our Hall of Fame, nominate them. They cannot get in unless they are nominated. And just want to remind everybody that Home Days is next weekend? Next weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And as Mr. Fincham said, we have Meet the Candidates tomorrow night at the Senior Center from 7:00 to 9:00. You can come, get to know your school board candidates and your city council candidates. And my understanding, it is not recorded, so please be there. 7:00 to 9:00 at the Senior Center. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. I'll skip to Allison, because I know you have a lot to say.
Okay, thank you. I want to first, again, kind of piggyback off what Jason said. I want to thank our, our Brooklyn school buddies and our school ambassador. Twice in my lifetime, I switched schools, once when I was in first grade. And fortunately, I was still in the same district, but new kids, new faces, and, you know, I, I knew kids, so I was okay. But then in the eighth grade, when I went to a whole new school district, I felt a little lost. So, you know, I'm very social, so I know that I made friends very quickly, but I know for some people, or for some young, young people, it's really hard. So I think with that, with the group of ambassadors and the buddies, I think that's a really good thing that our, our school district is doing to help our new students feel comfortable. Think about, how can we expand for our parents, too? Like, how can we get them in to help them feel comfortable as well? Again, thank you for all that attended our 2025 Brooklyn Hall of Fame induction ceremony last week. I've been on the committee now, this is my second year, and the number of, the number of people that we get, you know, and sort through all the information and everything, and then, you know, we choose seven. It's, it's really hard sometimes, because there are so many alumni that have done so many good things, teams, you know, coaches, and hopefully, people will still continue to submit, and, you know, we're, we're already going to start planning for 2026. So thank you. Thank you to all of our residents and families and our students who have been attending our fall sports events. I know that all of our players, as well as, and for being on when they're performing at halftime, I know they love seeing people in the stands. So thank you again for coming and showing your support. Kelly and I met today with Mrs. Jones and Lisa for the Wellness of Family Engagement Committee. Again, I just want to say, I'm very excited for our Brooklyn Early Childhood Family Resource Center to be opening October, what did it say, the 4th? Yep, from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. Please come and see what an amazing, I can't wait for the kids to get in there, but what an amazing building it is and all the hard work that we've done to make it. It's going to be great. Let's see. A lot of things happening, you know, in Brooklyn under the Wellness of Family Engagement with services that we provide for our students, leadership opportunities through our ROCKS Program for the girls. The One Circle ad will be for the boys this year, and we empower. I liked, Mrs. Jones, what you had told us about our, the new program Handle With Care, how we partner with our, our police and, and, yeah, first responders for our, for our children in our community. And then the only other thing that I have is that, I'm going to say exactly what, what Jason said, I want to encourage our community, please, tomorrow is an opportunity to meet candidates from council and from our school board who are running for this election. So many times I hear from residents, well, I don't even know who's running. Well, if you come tomorrow, you'll know, and then you'll know what each candidate knows about and, you know, what, what they're standing for. So please, tomorrow, 7 o'clock, Senior Center, come out and, you know, and see what's going on in our community. So you're informed. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to start off with the core construction update. We had a meeting last month. Like, a couple of the members said already, the, the early childhood center is almost ready to get opened. The heating and cooling system got all delivered and set up and some tweaks, all like Jason mentioned. Very excited to see that. Our next meeting that's recorded is, well, even our work session is there?
Yeah, our next meeting.
I'll take it away. President Paul will finish that up in her report, but we're excited. And then we're, we're going to have a curriculum meeting coming up very soon, and a finance meeting coming up soon, so we'll have updates on that next month. The Chamber of Commerce that I'm a part of, we are sponsoring Home Days next weekend, September 27th to 28th. We're going to have, Saturday is going to be jam-packed with stuff. I mean, a lot of stuff. We have bands all day playing, we have Lebanese dance group coming, an Irish dance group coming, a polka group coming to dance. We have Recess Cleveland in the middle of the stadium, they're going to set up inflatables... We have Recess Cleveland in the middle of the stadium, they're going to set up inflatables, bouncy houses, recess games, vendors that Ms. Crawl's doing a great job of putting together, I think over 50 vendors.
I think we're up to 60.
60, it's going to keep on going up, sorry. 60 vendors, that's going to be around the track and outside. I think we're going to have eight food trucks, a car show, fireworks, it's going to be just an awesome event for the community, so very excited. And then Sunday, we're having the Big Band Blowout from 11 to 7. Still going to have the vendors there and food trucks, and it'll be a great event there as well. So next Saturday, Sunday, Brooklyn Stadium. Thank you Dr. Polaris and the school for allowing us to have it there, because Veterans Memorial Park is closed, so very excited about that. Couple more chamber things, we're having a clam bake on October 26th, details are going to be sent out soon on that. And December 7th, I know I don't want to talk about Christmas and winter yet, but December 7th, we are having our Christmas tree lighting ceremony. All the funds go to the Brooklyn CARE Scholarship Foundation for that event, so please mark your calendars for that.
It's okay, we're 100 days. It's 100 days.
Is it 100 days?
Today.
Jeez, no bueno. All right. Career in college, so I love that the school does this. So on the parent-teacher conference night, Supriya and her team puts together Career in College Night, and they have, I think, how many did we have last year? How many vent, organizations? About 40 organizations, a couple hundred people that showed up, and it's just an awesome way for the parents to, to find out about their kids and then go get a job, or learn about the career, the college, what their kids are going to pursue, that their kids might go to. So it's a really good night, so October 9th, 5 to 7 for that. Want to shout out to the Hall of Fame Committee. I love the program you guys put together. It's so cool to see these people come back to their alma mater, and, and the Brooklyn plus you, that Brooklyn pride, you don't lose it. You know, you're, you're a hurricane for life, and they come back, and the way they talk and all the stuff they learned while they were here is awesome. And special congratulations to Andy Silver, that guy's everywhere, and he deserves that Ron Zudia Award more than anybody that I know, so I'm just very, very happy for him. Congratulations on that. Congratulations to the school on our report card. I can't wait till we get into the nitty-gritty of what we've grown within the, from last year, and then, you know, things that we, that we've done well with, so just excited about that, so congratulations on that. Good luck to whoever's going to be on the homecoming court. I don't think votes have gone out yet, but whoever gets on there, good luck, because there's games coming up on October 3rd, so good luck on that. And thank you to the student ambassadors. I had a favorite one up here, so very excited. She's, I call her Ambassador Hasruni now, so I'm very excited that they're a part of that. She's excited, so it's a great program, so thank you so much for doing that. They, they really take pride in it, so it's, it's an awesome, awesome, awesome event. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. I think everybody touched a little bit on, on everything that's happening around the city and, and the school. I went to the football game on Friday just because of the Hall of Fame and the 9/11, and I just want to, you know, last week was a rough week for a lot of Americans, and I just want to acknowledge the student section for their respect during the moment of silence. They were quieter than some adults, and I was just really proud of, you know, they were just very respectful, and, and I, I noticed. I'm just going to read something that I, I had read at council last week. Election season is upon us, and in the city of Brooklyn, we have four open council seats and two open school board seats. I kindly ask residents to do their due diligence and attend meetings, ask questions, and fact-check any unsolicited emails or handouts they may receive. There is a Meet the Candidates night on September 17th, and I would urge residents to attend. Get to know your candidates before you determine who is qualified and deserves to receive your vote. And just a reminder, Dr. Polaris and Mr. Sheerhart are your main contacts with the school and your best sources of information. And that is all I have. So we will move on to the treasurer's consent agenda.
Okay. 4.1, resolution to approve the minutes of the August 19th and September 2nd meetings. 4.2, resolution to approve financial statements for the month of August. And 4.3 is resolution to approve the student activities for the, Brooklyn High School is doing a charity fundraiser, and the Brooklyn High School Special Ed Department is doing a shop save and give back fundraiser. And 4.4 is the approval of the consent agenda.
May I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Send.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Ezra?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes. The superintendent's consent agenda.
She's got, she's got her first time here, she's got to read this one.
Right. So, 5.1, resolution to approve impracticality of transportation for the 2526 school year, as noted.
Good time, thank you.
5.2, resolution to approve Brooklyn City School District Student Wellness and Success Funding Plan 2526 school year, this is done annually. 5.3, resolution to approve Brooklyn City School District Gifted Acceleration and Early Entrance District Plan 2526 school year, this is an annual plan as well. 5.4, resolution to approve drug and vape cessation education agreement with Crossroads Health 2526 school year. 5.5, resolution to approve inter-district service agreement with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio for the 2526 school year. And 5.6, resolution to approve authorization to advertise passenger van bids from the Ohio School Council. 5.7, resolution to approve van and bus routes for the 2526 school year. 5.8, approval of the consent agenda.
May I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Send.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Ezra?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
And Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
The personnel consent agenda?
So 6.1, a resolution to approve certified salary schedule placement for the 2526 school year, as noted. 6.2, resolution to approve employment of classified staff, as noted below. 6.3, resolution to approve supplemental teaching assignments for the 2526 school year, as noted. 6.4, resolution to approve classified staffing, these are additional and adjusted hours and/or assignments for the 2526 school year, as noted. 6.5, resolution to approve classified on-call substitutes for the 2526 school year, as noted below. Resolution to, oh no, 6.6, resolution to approve athletic event workers for the 2526 school year, as noted. 6.7, resolution to approve a volunteer coach for the 2526 school year, as noted, a football middle school. 6.8, resolution to amend supplemental assignment, resolution 25-6-161, as noted. 6.9, approval of consent agenda.
May I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Send.
Questions, comments?
I'd like to have her come more often. I would hope.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Ezra?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
Ms. Crawl?
Yes.
I'm sending that to Ted, just kidding. I'm sending that to Ted.
Probably watching.
What's he going to do?
Resolve that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the following persons for the 2526 school year's supplemental teaching assignments with the provision that such individuals comply with all rules and regulations and State Department of Education regulations pertinent to proper certification and fulfill the requirements of the job description attached to their supplemental contracts oddly as needed. Brittany Hubble, may I have a motion, please?
So move.
May I have a second?
Send.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Ezra?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
abstained.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
And Ms. Crawl?
Yes. Is there any other business?
I do want to bring something up, I meant to bring up in my comments. Mr. Fincham brought up something during his comments regarding the word misappropriation. I want to clarify what that, why he brought that up. We had a good conversation yesterday. Head of community member reached out to me, actually two of them, that said that there was someone that was running for school board that was, that they got the, from the grasp of what he was saying, that there was misappropriation of funds on the school board, and so I called him and asked him, what's going on, but let's talk. And he, like he said in his report or in his message, that he said that he did not say that, and it was a misconstrued statement, but I just wanted to clarify why he brought that up. So any questions whatsoever, please reach out to us, but that was a misunderstanding, and I hope respectfully that that's what that was. And, you know, we've got five amazing board members up here, two are running for reelection. I can't ask for a better team of people to work with, and I just want, that there's no wrongdoing, there's no anything, so, but again, like Kelly said in her, in her message, any questions, please reach out to Dr. Polaris or Treasurer Sheerhart. They're the ones with the answers that you need to get the right information and facts, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next board meeting is Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, in the board conference room of the new Brooklyn Early Childhood and Family Resource Center at 4480 Ridge Road, Brooklyn, Ohio, 44144, at 6:15, please note that. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
May I have a second?
Seconds.
Mr. Sheerhart, will you call the roll, please?
You forgot her name?
All those in favor?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Ezra?
Yes.
Mr. Hubble?
Yes.
Ms. Rafter?
Yes.
And Ms. Crawl?
Yes.